All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors on April 16th. Vice Chair, will you lead us into the pledge of allegiance? Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the common ground, indivisible, and free of duty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, just a quick note. Supervisor Graham will not be joining us in today's meeting. Moving on to public comments. We sign this full information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name to the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Okay, anyone wishing to... There we go. All right. Well, I don't want to make you wait. Kate Graves from Lewiston. So I was looking at the letters to the editor in last week's paper, and I see our representative thinks he represents us in a letter, but I would like to thank Supervisor Keith Rose for actually representing us. Thank you. I appreciate your at least trying to listen to constituents and actually go try to make our House Representative person respond and listen to us. And if he's going to complain that you've been there too many times, kudos for you for trying. And I believe you. I believe what you said. I believe what you repeated was true and correct. And I know that I have talked to Jared Huffman's representatives, his staff before. And in front of witnesses, I've been misled and purposely misled. And so I don't know where Jared Huffman's getting this information from. I've never heard you misrepresent the bill. And if you have said something, you immediately corrected it. If you said that it added to federal land, you corrected that in federal wilderness taking. So, thank you. I really appreciate you trying. And shame on him for slamming you in a letter.
Good morning, Supervisors. Kelly Gant, Trinity Center. I'm the chairman of the Dreammakers Gala. And I just want to publicly thank the elected officials who came and helped at our gala. Judge Hariford was one of the people who volunteered to step up and work that gala. Keith Rose are from District One. And then the person who gets the good sport of the evening was Sheriff Saxon, who put up with all of Senator McGuire's antics. And of course, Senator McGuire for coming up and being our auctioneer. That event would not have been a success it was without his enthusiasm and his draw. So, thank you, Keith and Mr. Saxon. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Ziegler from Big Park. And I'm starting this process. The neighbors found out that I'm going to be making some waves, what's going on in the neighborhood. The county just gave us notice with seven days' notice to file an appeal for a major marijuana grow that's going to be affecting our well, our spring. I went up and inspected our spring. High line's been ripped out. They put five new lines in. I'm at war with the next-door neighbor. I have to live next door to this junkyard. Oh, I got one of those. He dragged about 100 cars in about three years ago. It's become a health issue. My doctor seems to think that it was the stress over... It was major infestation of mice when he dragged all these cars in out of the woods. They got in my house. Seventeen years I've had two mice. Last winter, I had over 150 that I caught in the house. Plus, I've incorporated some pets that I don't think are doing their job. They sit there and watch. They come across the driveway between this junkyard and my house. And I tried to film them, but they looked like little pebbles, and 10 or 12 at a time. And I had a really nasty case of the shingles. Doctor says I came within 12 hours of losing my nose, my right eye, and my voice over it. So I lucked out really good. I had really good insurance. But I'm going to get to a head break now to fight the code issue on a major marijuana legal grow right above me. And there's also another 100, 150 plants up there that are illegal. So I got to fight it. And they've gotten wind of it, and they're giving me a hard time. So I want to go on record that I'm in fear for my safety, my health, and possibly anything else. So if it happens, you'll at least be on record. And that's all I got right now, but it's arm and say, I'll be back. Thank you for your time.
I have some comments regarding this type of situation later on. Do you want to deal with them later during report out, or...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to the private department. I'm going to leave here to get a code violation. But I just want to go on record right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Anna Carson. I live in District Two here in Weaverville. I'm here today as a representative of the Trinity County Arts Council. I am the event coordinator for an event that we are sponsoring, Frontier Days. At your last meeting, you agreed to consent on waiving some fees for us. So I wanted to first say thank you so much. Two, I wanted to make sure that you, that I shared with you this incredible event and that the TOT Fund supports this event. This event is really important because it gives a lot of visibility to the Norellmuck Wintu Nation. The event has grown from last year, which was our inaugural event, with community support and also some corporate donations. So anybody to attend, I'm going to leave some flyers on the back table, if that's okay, to distribute amongst your districts. And anyone here is welcome to take them as well. The event is slotted for May 11th, Saturday. That is the Saturday of Mother's Day weekend. And going forward, hopefully, this will just become an annual event for Trinity County. It's really intended to bring tourism to our county.
Okay, anyone else?
Can you check the staff? This is not the first time we're hearing this week about letters that go out to neighbors, making sure that they're going out in a timely fashion. I know there's this mail delay with Sacramento, and that causes a delay, but I think there's a way around that if you go local mail.
Yeah. Okay, I can check on that for you.
And did you have some... Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you. And I will say last year's Frontier Days was quite a success. I will volunteer the board. If anyone wants help from the board members on your event, please call us, email us. I'm sure I've just volunteered all of you.
Me too.
And me too. Yeah. All right. So moving on to presentations. Do we need a few minutes to set up, or is it set up, Tina?
No.
A few minutes? Nope. Okay. So Item 1.1, we see a presentation from Julie Goldstein from Human Resource Network regarding sexual assault. No physical impact. I will remind everyone, this is Sexual Assault Month, if I'm not mistaken, of April. And HRN does a lot of work on a lot of issues. It's also Child Abuse Month. We've seen the ribbons throughout town. Welcome, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. So Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a national event. And Human Response Network this year participate in the month by participating in the campaign named As I Ask. And that refers to making sure that everybody has consent, whether it's to holding someone's hand, giving them a hug, or participate in any form of intimacy. And as a part of this event and to spread more awareness in the area of sexual assault, we have these pretty bows and ribbons on the street, up and down Main Street. And another area we also have begun doing is that we are making these signs and we're spreading throughout the county. And this one in particular talks about to break the silence for sexual assault and child abuse. Let me see here. And the other one we have is something that a lot of people might not think too much about, is that alcohol is actually the number-one date-breaker because alcohol lowers your defense mechanism and also because it's a very normal thing to drink. So people don't think about it as a date-breaker. And we want to spread the awareness around that. In addition, we are also having what we call Chalk the Walk. And Shelley's going to speak more about that.
So it's our first time running this campaign. It's called Chalk the Walk. We're getting all the schools in the district and local businesses and any take cares or any personal person that wants to participate. We're giving each of them a box of chalk, a flyer on it, and asking them to draw pictures, quotes, anything they want to do around sexual assault awareness. And they are to take a picture and email it to us at Human Response Network by the 30th of this month, and will be entered in a raffle to win. The winnings is either a gift card or a basket with notebooks and pencils in it for the schools. We've had a lot of good feedback. A lot of schools are really excited. So we're excited to see how it turns out and just bring the awareness to the community.
Yeah, and we are reaching a lot of classrooms in the community. So how many are we reaching?
Total, we've had every school in the district. So I want to say at least 50 K through six. And then we also have seventh through 12th. So the high school has at least 282 students, and then plus the continuation. And then we have Hayport. I cannot remember their exact number, but I got all those numbers and took their chalk. We're also going out and taking the pictures for the schools so that they can participate, so they don't take their time to take the picture and email it to us. So I've been driving all over the county recently and delivering the chalk. And I'll be at the end of the month to take the pictures to enter them in the raffle.
Yeah, and also for the lower-grade classes, we wanted to give the teachers a tool about how to talk about consent in the classroom because for some, that's a little bit of a challenge. So we've got these wonderful books that we're also bringing into the teachers. And it has all these nice pictures about, you know, I mean, you should ask someone if you would like to hold a hand or, you know, anything in that area.
It covers consent, responsibility, self-respect, respect for others. It's just the literature we're giving them so that when they go to do their drawing, they can read the book first, go over it, so the students have an idea of what they're exactly doing and what they're talking about. Another thing is their logo is "I Ask." So we let the schools know, like, from consent, from borrowing a friend's pencil to their jacket, and then, like Julie said, to intimacy. But so they kind of just put "I Ask" and "for a hug," "I Ask for a Friend," "I Ask for Love." So if it wanted to be something really vague, just so they could participate.
And in addition, we are also going to celebrate Denim Day, which is the 24th of April. And we invite anyone to wear denim on that day in support of sexual assault survivors. And in addition, Human Response Network provides services to all survivors of sexual assault, regardless if the assault happened 50 years ago or if it happened five minutes ago. And we provide a wide array of services, from emergency shelter to court accompaniment, hospital accompaniment, and various services in between. And it's completely confidential.
So that's so great. I was curious about the pictures. Do you have themes for the children? And is there... How do you choose? And there are different age groups. So like, you have a kindergarten and a fourth grade. Could you explain that, please?
So we are going to do the businesses by themselves and the schools by themselves. And the schools, we're going to break down from elementary to high school. And like, K through probably, third, fourth through the two, and then fifth and up. They will be entered in for the baskets and gift cards. So if they want to buy a pizza party with that, they can, or more school supplies, they can, whatever they choose to do with that. We didn't... It's wide open in what they want to do. So we're just going to take them, write their name down, put it in a basket. So it's the luck of a draw, so no feelings are hurt or...
Yeah, and it can be as simple as drawing the chill awareness ribbon, or it can be something much more complex. And we know that art can be a very healing experience. So we also want to invite that to the community. In addition, I think that art is a way for people to come together. So we hope that this can be a tradition that can carry on for following sexual assault families.
And I gave each school examples of artwork that others have done. And I did the younger generation, they had hearts and the ribbons, really simple things. And then as you got to high school, like, you had some really intense, neat ones. And quotes and facts, like 1-4. So it's wide open for them to play with and use their imaginations. And like Julie said, the art helps with trauma, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, and we will take pictures of all the entries and post them on Facebook so everybody in the community can go in and take a look of all the amazing art that the students and businesses have created.
Any other questions?
Yep. Comment. Don't forget, there's South Fork at some of the schools. There's some sidewalks, and there's sidewalk in District Five and Three, believe it or not, and right outside the library. So make use of it. That's terrific. Thank you very much, John. You're welcome. Thank you for acting as the outside agency for, especially for behavioral health. Your HRN is an incredible asset to pick out. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for recognizing that. And we always try to help in any way we can. So thank you for your support.
I have one quick question. Would you say, now when you're reporting for domestic violence, that month, I believe that's October?
Yes.
And you bring some stats. Would you say your caseload on sexual assault is about the same on the decline?
Unfortunately, sexual assault is highly under-recorded in this county. We're actually doing an extra effort this specific year because we are recognizing that the outline area is not being served and historically has not been done so. So we are actually going to every business that we can get in contact with, hotel, bars, anything like that, to spread awareness about our services and all medical providers and so on. And we're going to try to see how we can work better together with the community to actually bring services to the entire county in the same way as people experience it here. So that is our goal. We do have a plan about how we're going to do it. However, I do believe in that you go out and you hear what people need. So I don't like to go out with some preconceived thoughts and say, "I need you to fit in there." I want to get out to the community and hear what the community need. And then we will go back and we will set up a plan. And if needs change down the road, we will just modify.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, both. If you're going to work throughout the county.
Moving on to consent. To Callender. These items include routine non-controversial matters when we acted upon the board by one vocal motion. A member of the board staff or publicly requested item be pulled and considered separately. Board members. All right. Supervisor Grove?
2.5, 2.6.
All right. Okay. Supervisor Chairman?
No matter.
See now, did you say you had an item?
Yes, 2.21.
2.1. Is it 2.21 that you said?
It's 2.21.
Yes, got it. Okay. Any members of the public wish you to pull an item? 2.19. Thank you. 2.23. All right. Everybody else? All right. It's that, and we can change the motion for the remainder. Okay.
So moved.
One second. Hi. Supervisor Grove?
Hi. Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
A question for council. To save Supervisor Grove's trip, can we handle... Can I keep them outside for a moment?
Yeah, right. Okay. Just wanted to save you a trip.
Okay. So that's where we're at?
That is my first item to be filed, so...
Okay, so I refuse off of 2.5 and 2.6.
All right. Thank you. All right. 2.5. Find no objections to the issuance of a daily alcohol beverage license to Trinity Trail Alliance to serve alcoholic beverages at their sports event to be held at Loudoun Park in Weaverville, June 8th, 2019. No fiscal impact. Okay, board members' questions. Any member of the public? All right, Seena.
I will change the motion.
Motion to approve 2.5 as presented.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. Thank you. Moving on to 2.6. Find the proposed license will meet the public convenience and necessity and find no objections to the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage license to Don Wood and Caitlin Williams for a convenience market located at 2401 Lewiston Turnpike Road, Lewiston, California, 96052. No fiscal impact. Board members? Members of the public? Okay. I'll make the motion to approve 2.6 as she's out.
You have a second.
All right. Thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
And you're going to oppose?
So moved.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, John. All right. Moving on to 2.19. A Dr. Resolution which removes the following assets from the sheriff's office to capital asset inventory listing and authorize the disposal of vehicles through auction. Where disposal of as scrap. Asset ID number 13349, 2013 Chevy Tahoe, VIN number 1GNS2E06DR140540. Asset ID number 13228, 2006 Ford Expedition. VIN number 1MPU16556LA48317. Asset ID number 13168, a 2005 Ford Expedition. VIN number 1MPU16556LA48137. Asset ID number 12602, 2004 Expedition. And last, asset ID 12403, a 1997 Buick Le Sabre. Unknown revenue to the sheriff's office. Good morning.
I just wanted to note this. I missed a comment on the third one down. The last three letters that then were 317.
Oh, thank you.
There was a mistake on the resolution on one of the VIN numbers. There was an X put in there, a two should have been a four. The original resolution and corrected resolution, I just wanted to point that out.
Which ID number would that be?
It was 2005 Ford Expedition.
Gotcha. The same one that I made a mistake of. All right.
It provided the original with a mistake and I'm going to have to re...
But these two on our res... On the agenda item are the same number?
Yes.
Then it's correct for the reservation?
It is correct, yeah.
So we're going to bring in the newer resolution, the corrected resolution, I should say. Okay. Counsel, anything I need to know? All good?
No, that's fine. I'd be clear a little bit.
Okay. Board members' questions?
Nope.
Members of the public? All right. See, none.
Would you like a motion?
I would, please.
A motion to approve is a 2 dot...
19.
19 as presented with the changes in the 2005 Ford Expedition as noted in the resolutions.
I'll second.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. You're coming to have it, I've noticed. Not just the sheriff. Yeah, I thought we did. We did.
Good morning. Good morning. We're here with item 2.21. Find that a temporary waiver of fees for residential brush disposal at the county transfer sites provides a benefit to the public and is not for the purpose of fundraising and authorize solid waste to waive fees for brush disposal in an amount of $5 per cubic yard to a Trinity County residence with fuel fund, higher fuels reduction for a two-week period. No impact to the general fund, cost of $5 per cubic yard from the solid waste enterprise fund. Cost will be offset by savings and fees by solid waste to dispose of the brush. All right. I think we have anything else to add, right?
Yes, a bad... We didn't indicate what, two weeks?
Right.
Because I was working on when the best two-week period would be. After talking with staff, then we're thinking that June 18th through June 29th would work for that.
Okay. So public can bring their brush for disposal for a mere $5.
Per yard. Cubic yard. For residential brush to the sites that collect brush, which is Weaverville, Hayport, Trinity Center, Junction City, Ruth, and Mamdouzine. And the normal things that we accept for brush. Stumps that contain a ripoff with dirt need to be limited to four inches. And the diameter is okay on branches if they're actually clean and contain no dirt. We usually have the four-inch limit on those also, but for this, we would allow to go over that as long as it's clean.
I just want to make sure and clarify, it's free to the public. You're waiving $5.
Yes.
Okay, yes. All right. John?
I can put it on property. Just can't get it there.
Still stuning?
No.
All right. Any questions for the public? No? See, none?
I'll make the motion to accept as amended.
All right. I have a second.
You've got a second. And amendment is June 18th through 29th, 2019.
All right.
This actually came out of thoughts that we had in the listening area, people that were cleaning brush sites and thought that not only were they cleaning brush sites for the government, but they shouldn't have to pay for it. So I want to thank you for putting this together. And I just hope that we do a lot of advertising so people know.
All right. Thank you. Any other?
I'm done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved, thank you. I propose two point two three.
What did she ever do to you?
All right. So, adopt- this is gonna be a long item, sorry, to read. Adopt a resolution which declares eight pieces of Department of Transportation DOT equipment, one transit bus, one DA vehicle, and four helping human service vehicles surplus, and authorize the removal from the county's list of fixed assets, and further authorizes disposal of equipment through auction or disposing of as scrap. Be careful of the word scrap. Asset ID twelve four one two, nineteen ninety-eight Ford Ranger, VIN number one F T Y R eleven U eight W P A eight seven four five three. Asset number one two six one five, a two thousand GMC Safari van, VIN number one G K E L one nine W four W Y B five three three one two seven. Asset number one three zero nine six, a two thousand and three Buick Rendezvous, VIN number three G five D B zero three E eight three S five one three one zero two. Asset number, ID number one three one eight six, two thousand five Subaru Impreza, VIN number J five one G G six seven five 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 H eight one four one nine zero. Asset ID number one two seven seven six, two thousand Toyota Grab four, VIN number J T three H P one zero V two Y zero two two nine two nine four. Asset ID number zero three nine seven, nineteen seventy-nine International two five two four, six-cylinder oil distributor serial number C A two five two J H A three two six two six. Asset ID number one zero five two seven, nineteen ninety-two Dodge W dash three fifty, VIN number one B six M M three six C nine P S two zero one eight three four. Asset ID number one two nine six two, two thousand and two four F three fifty, VIN number one F T S five three one F five two E B seven zero seven one three. Asset ID number one three two hundred, two thousand six four three fifty, VIN number one F D W X three six P five six E D six eight zero two nine. Asset ID number one two nine six four, two thousand two four F three fifty, VIN number one F T S five, S F three one F four two E B nine two two seven nine. Asset ID number one three one nine nine, two thousand six four F three fifty, VIN number one F T W X three one P X six E D seven one nine one one. Asset ID number one two nine six one, two thousand two Ford F three fifty, VIN number one F T S five three one F three two E B seven zero seven one two. Asset ID number one two eight one seven, two thousand one Ford Expedition, VIN number one F two, one F T, excuse me, S F three one F three two E B seven zero seven one two. And last, asset ID number one three two three one, two thousand eight Ford Starcraft, VIN number one F D four E four five S four eight D A one eight five four zero. Anticipated revenue is thirty thousand dollars to the road fund, two thousand to Health and Human Services, fifteen hundred to the district attorney, and five hundred to transit. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill.
Asset ID number one two eight one seven, the VIN number was duplicated from the previous line item, and the correct VIN number is one F M R U one five L zero one L B three one eight three four.
That was L B as in boy, did you say?
L B as in boy, yes. The resolution is correct.
I was just going to stop and look. Great, all right. Thank you, any questions for board members on this? Members of the public? And just for the public's knowledge, what is the date that these will be available for auction?
Probably within the next three days.
Okay. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept two point two three. In correction.
All second. Tina? Aye. Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
You are.
Supervisor Morris? Yes, thank you. All right, I think that takes care of all the items that were proposed. All right, moving on to reports and announcements. Reports from department heads? Reports from county administrative officer.
From item two, four point one and four point two.
All right. County council, anything? All right. Members of the board supervisors, Supervisor Finley?
Out of county travel, yesterday I was in Burnie with PSA Two. And I had a few days out of town with Cal H B C. And in reference to the gentleman earlier, I've had many constituents that have called that are very dissatisfied with their ability to respond to the letters that have gone out and what's going on with that. So something needs to be done, whether we get together about it later or I just keep telling, giving people a list of people to contact in the state and the county, it's fine with me.
So, Richard, there seems to be some confusion of the process. So, I don't know if you could follow up with staff as to make sure. I know they've done a list of questions for the public of how the process works. But I know it's a process. But it's, I think people feel at some point they can, they have to pay five hundred dollars to even make a comment or ask for it, which is not the case. So there seems to be some confusion.
Yeah, I can, I can do some of that now and then I can work with staff. Some of the issues we're having is the ten-day appeal process, and the date starts from the time the letter is sent out, and some people aren't receiving it.
Right.
Three to five days, so it shortens that time period. If you just have question concerns, you are free to call the planning department and speak with our deputy director there, or you can go up the chain to, Rettipit, he's the one who, the appeal would be directed towards. So we can respond to those without an official appeal.
So somehow that has to be out there, so people feel they can at least inquire without having to pay any money?
Okay, I'll see if it's on the website, because we did put out a question and answer, and if that isn't on there, I'll ask him to include that.
I'll also get the recent emails I've received.
Okay.
They're very detailed, as to the problems that are going on.
Really, thank you, oh yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right, Supervisor Grove?
No, out of county travel. But I will remind people, we are now in the high river flows, so anybody down river or thinking that it looks very fun to jump into, please be very careful. These flows will go on for, at least go on up and down. So this is a little different than the past years. So the graphs, which you may or may not have seen in the paper, peak and then they drop and then they peak. So it's not in the past where we just peak and then we're gonna steady down. This, we'll have several peaks through this. So just because it was low yesterday doesn't mean it might not be high tomorrow.
Supervisor Chadwick?
No, out of county.
Okay. Out of town briefly, to try and, yes, believe it or not, we're still trying to get some information on the various meetings that didn't happen very eloquently on the herbicide issue. So we're out of Caltrans to try and get some information. I'm hoping there will be another public meeting for them to once again firm plan on what they're going to do. They have a draft plan, but I'm not sure if that's permanent or not. So, other than that, moving on to report from ad hoc committees. Commercial cannabis ordinance amendments, still the same, Merrick and Lindo.
I would like to follow up a little bit on our previous discussion on the complaints in the hour, if there's that's all right.
Sure.
So the process, we issued categorical exemptions, which is an environmental document. The neighbors within three hundred feet gets sent a letter. Those neighbors have the right to respond and/or by letter or calling. And this mainly, or this solely pertains on to the environmental document. So if there's inaccuracies in the document, then a person can point that out. Director Tippit is then to look at all complaints and determine if, if there's merit in that complaint, not that I just don't like my neighbor, but the well isn't accurate, or whatever of the regulations that might not be correct in the environmental document. He will make a decision to move forward or have work done to have that site comply. If he moves forward and you disagree, that's when you have to pay the five hundred dollars to appeal that, and that appeal then goes to the planning commission, where you would state your case of why the environmental document is flawed. And then if, if the commission can disagree with you or send it back to say, no, no, these things need to be fixed, then you have the right, if that, if it's been turned down, to appeal to the board of supervisors here. So the process, there is an in-depth process, but it is a quick timetable. So that is an issue, that is, we are following all our past procedures in this, in that ten-day period. So that's, that's the procedure in action.
Thank you, you had jogged a conversation I had with a constituent on a similar issue. They also were under the impression that if a license holder, six months down the road, just, they had questions on that they couldn't inquire about, if there was something going on they thought wasn't in compliance with the regulations, that can be investigated at any time, that's not related to this issue. If you have a complaint on an area that is not a license holder, you would go through the code enforcement complaint process, and that would get turned over to the code enforcement officers and handled from there. So there's two paths throughout the year, anyone, and if someone is not following the rules, just want to clarify that. Thank you, Supervisor Grove. Federal lands legislation?
Yes, everybody saw the letter in the paper, so fun stuff. There will be a rebuttal, an explanation, hopefully you missed the paper. So at this point, it is headed to the collaborative, and the collaborative will, there's no change, as we said before, they will discuss it and vote thumbs up, thumbs down, and then that recommendation will come back to the board and we'll have a plan on what to do from there.
Okay. Retail cannabis ordinance, Supervisor Chadwick?
So I turned in some flyers to Tina, and she can share them. This coming Saturday at the Trinity County Fairgrounds in Hayport, from eight thirty to twelve thirty, our ag commissioner will be bringing Trinity County up to date on what the compliance is for all farming in Trinity County. We'll have a lunch break from twelve thirty to two. At that time, there will be an update on what the state is allowing and what it looks like in California for retail. Then we will break out the maps for Trinity County and look at the possibilities of where retail would fit. And then we will end it up with what retail in other communities that benefits, the pros and cons, that other communities who have entertained the retail. There will be a time for questions after each session of the speaking, and then at the end of the day, we will take questions until the end. Our next scheduled scoping event will be May fifteenth from four to eight o'clock at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Weaverville. We are trying to do these on Saturdays and in the evening in order to allow people who have work schedules to participate. So everyone's welcome, and we look forward to seeing you.
Did you have, did you save the date yet in the?
Fourth of May, yeah, the May fifteenth, it's a Wednesday evening, four to eight.
All right, thank you.
I have a question that I saw on Facebook, the expansion of the committee, or is the committee still an ad hoc, or is this moved to a standing committee?
It is an ad hoc, but we have opened communications to stakeholders, as well as a letter went out to all the public guardians, including law enforcement and Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife, Craig Care, who runs the water district. If they can't make the meetings, that they could communicate any concerns or have a private meeting. So at this time, this is more like a scoping session, and just to get input, to see what the community at large, but it is a small committee that is working on it, but we're taking stake, we're listening to as many voices as we can as we go forward.
So the stakeholders have no voting rights?
No, no, sir.
So it's just stood even?
Correct.
All right, moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Board members, members of the public, yeah, all righty. Moving on to four point one, under clerk of the board, adopt a resolution which commits future allocations for cash matched toward Board of State and community corrections, known as V S C grants, to construct the Trinity County Sheriff's Detention Facility, a one point three million from general fund. Are you taking this?
Yes, I can, yes. And it's actually as simple as that, but we're in our final stage of securing the construction of the jail. As the board knows, we had bids that came in, and we are working with the lowest bidder right now. After all calculations were completed, we have determined, and the number is, I have an exact number, it's actually one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. We're asking the board to set aside from general fund to complete the construction of our jail. The rest of it will be funded through the bond of the state.
So this is above and beyond the two point whatever million we've already spent, right?
Yes, it is, yeah, this is, we had a, we had a ten percent match, which we met and did so much earlier in the grant process. But this is for the construction aspect of the jail. We just, the amount we have in the bond didn't cover the entire cost. We actually were pleased with this number, even though it's still a large number, we're pleased with it. We were anticipating around four million dollars. The bids came in very, very close, very competitive, and so it's allowing us this much less amount required to complete the construction.
And I notice this is gonna be partly the next one, so does that number include the alternatives that are recommended?
Yes, it does. And contingency. Yeah, and much of that is, again, if we can build, build the facility without any contingency, this number would reduce, because most of this covers a contingency. this number would reduce, because most of this covers a contingency. We're going to have a 5%, 5% to 7% contingency. So this number, we may not need this much if we can, if we can bring it right on, right on cost, but if we know it, something this large is always unforeseen cost, but if we keep a close bid as possible, we may be able to reduce this number.
Any questions, board members? Members of the public, questions on the side? All right, bringing back to the board.
Got a motion to approve as presented 4.1.
Thank you. I thought there was a change in the.
We made that motion with the change in number. Sure. 1.3 million is what, $1,342,752. Thank you.
You got it.
One second. Thank you.
Big hope and prayer?
4.1.
Okay, Tina, please pull the board. Hi.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to 4.2. Authorize the Director of Transportation, Rick Tippett, to sign the contract with Sletton Construction Company contingent upon the Department of Finance's approval of the contract award $18,788,635, primarily funded by the VSCC grant funds and county general funds.
And with the passage of that last resolution, we send that out to the VSCC, so they know that the county secured the funds, and they will approve the bond measure, approve the funding, and with their approval, we're asking that, that Director Tippett has authority to sign the contract in the construction.
Okay. Questions?
I have just something to point out. In the computer backup, online backup, the bid package, the bids weren't in it, and Tina's printed those off, and that's what we have.
Oh, yes, sorry. That's one of the reasons we're feeling comfortable with contingency is the difference from the high bid to low bid was right at a million dollars, which means the architect did a very good job and detailed what needed to be, what was in the, in the construction. So there was no, you were fairly guessing. I mean, times a bid like this will have $2, $3 million discrepancy. This one, the first and second bid, $4,000 difference. So that's, that's one of the reasons I'm optimistic that we may be able to, you see, that once we send this off to, off to the state, they'll get their approval. General board.
So there has been chit or chatter about why, why local contractors aren't being used. Do you like to address that?
Yeah, this type of construction is very unique, and there's not a lot of contractors out there that could handle the entire bid process, the entire construction process. However, within this bid, several local contractors are being used. So the general contractor itself wouldn't qualify for, for construction of this site, but we did encourage, and we were pleased that there are many local contractors that are using subs in this construction.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not seeing what page it's on. I apologize. There was a $2,000 a day fee for the contractor if it doesn't hit the target date.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
And it didn't have any reason, it just was wrong, and I was.
I believe that would come with the VSCC.
Okay.
Once it, once the contract is, is awarded, we haven't awarded the contract yet, once it's awarded, construction starts. I believe within the bond, there's a time period that is allowed to complete the construction. So I believe that verdict will probably come at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor? Oh, sorry. We jumped ahead. I thought I asked earlier, but I didn't hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. So thank you for adding the other bids, because I was curious about that. And my other question, reading it, I mean, you're fairly specific about this is what we want done, and this is what it's going to cost. I would like something in there that this is your bid, we've told you what we want, and this is what it's going to cost. Because like Lance Gulch Road and all that, and how it just keeps adding to, and even your, I don't know what you call him, Rick Tippett, whatever hat he was wearing, said that, you know, he can't tell you he's done, and they're ongoing. Once we get past what this government's going to give us in grant money, then the rest of it's going to come from us. So I would like our contractors to be given a job, we get a price, and they stick to it, because that's what the rest of the plan it does. And I would like assurances that that's going to happen here. If you guys add something completely new, that's different. If you bid on building a warm food station, and you say how much it's going to be, then that's what's going to be. And if you underbid it, then you eat that, instead of us eating it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
I would like to see you to address that.
When the bids came in, there was also amendments to the bids of different, for lack of better words, kind of wish lists. And we went through that with the sheriff, and those will all been included in this, in this total price. So there can't be any more additions to this. If we, we change something, we add something, that would actually violate our, our term of process, and we'd have to actually go back out to bid. We can't decide midstream that, oh, wait a minute, we want to add a two-story watchtower to it, or something like that. We have to stay within the scope of this, of this bid and the plans that we have. There is always contingency, because there's something that comes up where a water line needs to be changed, or something of that nature needs to be done. But as far as adding additional space to the, to the jail, or adding something different that's not in the plans, we're not allowed to do that with this. So not only don't I anticipate that, but we can't do that. We have to stick with the plans that, that we submitted for bid. You know, we, we took out the kitchen years ago when we were trying to do this. It would be nice if we could put that back in, but that's something we can't do, because that would change the scope of the bid, and it would be fair to the other bidders, you have to go back out to bid.
So that the, the point that the contractor comes halfway through and say, you know, let me lose the money in this, you guys are going to have to pop off one way, that should not be a thing.
That should be a thing. It's, they're, they're signing their name, saying that this is what they can build. That's part of the free market enterprise. If you think you can do it for that cost, and you sign your name, we're going to hold you that cost.
And they put up a bond for that.
Yes, they put up a bond, correct.
So I have a question, Richard. Looking at the backup and sheet that was handed out earlier, there's these additives, if you will, or alternate additions to the bid of $18 million. And I see all the bidders did put in for the list that's in the backup. So they've agreed, just for the public knowledge, if we want to add, I don't know, food service equipment, that $78,000 would be the extra 78.
Yeah, and what we did, what we did each bid, as you see, if we said, okay, so the first, the lowest bidder was, is a set construction, and we want to add these in, we had to do that with all the other bids, add those in, because some of them, you see, are less expensive for, like amendment two, they're the highest of the, of the three. So we didn't just pick their lowest bid overall and then add these in later. We had to assume that we want them with each one. So it did, right, so it still kept them as the lowest bidder. So we didn't say, well, they came in as a base lowest bid, and then we added these. We had to take the other bids and say, if we, if we accepted their bid, we add those in too, and still, for the overall bid, they still maintain as the lowest bidder.
All right. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question for council. When we make a, a motion on this, do we have to make a motion specifying that the alternatives are part of the contract?
No, it would be, it's part of the contract as it's written in now, so you don't have to specify. You can read that as it's presented.
Okay, thank you.
If you're going to make a motion, I would include a new number.
You would?
No, I'm asking, would you, please? In case you hear that.
Okay, I'll make a, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I would move to accept the 4.2 as presented, with the adjustment, the new number, the the extra money, 1.342,752.
Sorry.
That's for the.
Yes, I don't, I don't think there are any changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that would, because the bond is going to be for the.
My apologies.
Yeah, with $18 million.
I move to accept 4.2 as, as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you got a second on it, then.
All right, so all in favor? I. All right, anyone opposed? No, so thank you. All right, so before, we'll take a five-minute break, so our guests can get set up for their presentation.
Yes, sure. To the theme song of Jerkery Wood.
It has to be a thing out.
All right, we'll take five minutes, and our guests can get set up. All right, we're back in the session. I have to read the item, and then we'll turn it over to Kelly Gant and Susan Marie. Item 4.3, receive a presentation from Kelly Gant and Susan Marie with the Trinity County Visitors and Department Bureau, Trinity County Chamber of Commerce regarding tourism marketing efforts and the revamping of the county display at the state Capitol. No physical impact. Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Kelly Gant, I'm from Trinity Center, and I'm president of the Trinity County Chamber of Commerce and secretary of the Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau. And I gave a presentation a while back about the Chamber 2.0, and how we are splitting the activities apart, Chamber being focused and an advocate on businesses, and the Visitors' Bureau going to be doing the marketing. So this presentation is how we've been using the TOT money in the last year. All of it's been funded from the Chamber, because we haven't spun up the Visitors' Bureau completely, but we've taken advantage of having that entity out there, and we're working on our branding. So this is the Visit Trinity brand that we're using right now. You'll notice that if you look in any travel magazines, there's Visit X. Everyone's using Visit. So we decided we'd kind of do the same thing. So as you know, the, the money that you give to us through the TOT should be used to generate overnight stays in the county. We use TOT to generate TOT. Hopefully that would get us going, and we have more to work with as we go forward. And so that means you need to really focus long distance. So marketing to Reading isn't going to help much. They'll come up and go home. So we need to reach out to the Sacramento, the Bay Area, and beyond to do that. So our primary vehicle for marketing is the Visit Trinity County website. And this was built on a SCED grant that we got in 2013, and we have just the highlights of the things that interest people about Trinity County. There's a lot more we can do with it. We maintain it just by volunteers, but it is a good start to get people to get more information about Trinity County when they hear about it. With any website, websites don't sell themselves, you need to drive people to websites. So that's, the next part is how to get people to actually even go to your website. So we are very grateful to have two really good partners. The biggest one is the Shasta Cascade Wonderland Association. Trinity County has a seat on their board. The association represents all eight of the northern rural counties, except for the ones on the coast. And they have recently rebranded their association Upstate California, because as a board, when we sat down and talked about it, people get really confused. Northern California, people think it's everything from Fresno to Wayrica. So because we're rural, because we have the features and characteristics of upstate New York and some of the other upstate regions in the U.S., we've picked upstate California. Shasta Cascade Wonderland is funded a little bit by its membership, but a lot by money that comes in through Visit California. So Visit California would be your broad marketing for the state, then you have the regions with the Shasta Cascade, and then you'd go down to your other chambers. They also get a lot of money from the City of Reading. City of Reading has a Tourism Business Improvement District, which all the hotel dealers assess themselves an extra fee, and they have multi-million dollars that they have to play with for marketing. So the Reading Convention Bureau and Shasta Cascade Wonderland work really close together. And so our strategy is to coattail on the back of them, partner with them, and try to make use of their marketing campaigns to help Trinity County. So one of the, the main publications, and you each have one of these, is the Upstate California Visitors Guide, and this has information about each of the eight counties. Every year, Trinity County is invited to redo the wording and the prose that are in there. The only businesses that get listed in this magazine are Shasta Cascade business, or members. It costs $250 a year for a business to join the Cascade Association, and those are the ones that are listed in there. If you look in their, on their lodging, just because they didn't want to just look like, make Trinity County look like it only had like three lodging options in the entire county, they do list a lot of our lodging with a phone number, but no other ad. So that was nice that they did that. It's very hard to get our lodging people to invest money. It's a struggle to even get them to join the Chamber at $85 a year. They say it's too much money, so getting them to pay $250 is even harder. But if they would understand the marketing benefit they would get from the membership, that would help them out with their marketing. And I'll show you some of the other stuff that they do. We have three ads in here, the Chamber does, or Visit Trinity. You can see our little Chinese dragons. We have three of those ads in that section, which we found more effective than doing one big one. We do put our annual events in there, and, and this is what Shasta Cascade gives away. They also have, they bring it to Europe, and they do a big marketing push to Germany. And there is a gentleman in Humboldt who does the international trips, and he just ships, they ship boxes and boxes and boxes of these things. Germany and Canada are the number two international travelers to our region. Next. One of the other things Shasta Cascade did through, for us, through Visit California, is a fire recovery campaign. Visit California, hearing about the car fire, wanted to do something to help our region. So they picked Reading, Siskiyou, and Trinity as their, the areas they wanted to help. And they funded a $125,000 social media campaign, and it's, the whole premise was, we didn't burn down, there's still a lot of the county left, come up, see us, and we didn't, we're not just ashes. So they did these ads on Facebook and Instagram and Google and Spotify, and you can't actually go out and see them. Of course, everyone knows from all the political stuff that's going around, is how an ad pops up in Facebook is a mystery. So, but they have bought into campaigns, and the target is young people who like what we have to offer, and the outdoors. So that's what this is targeted to. So this runs, it ran from March to June and goes to June, and so if you go out there, you might see one of those ads. And here's one of the ads, you can see the picture of Mr. Grove's Winery is one of the little ads, and Upstate of Mind is the theme. And Upstate of Mind is the theme. And then you can see another one of some people hiking. So those are the ads that are popping up on social media. You click on that, you end up on one of the landing pages. And then when you click on Visit Redding, Siskiyou, or Trinity, it takes you to those individual counties' websites. So we're seeing an increase in the number of visitors to our websites because of this campaign. So again, this would not have happened without our participation in the Shasta Cascade program. So if you look into some of the other ads, so it's Upstate of Mind. It's Down to Earth, Up for Anything is the tagline that came up with it. So we helped with this design, mostly Visit California kind of came up with the design, the themes. They picked the pictures they wanted to use on the landing page. There's a bunch of Instagram pictures, they picked those too. So they kind of ran it by us to see if there was anything wrong. Otherwise, this is their campaign for us. So the other thing we did in our partnership is the last three months, we have participated with the City of Redding and the Shasta Cascade at three California travel and adventure shows. The first one, so this is one of the booths. This is at LA, I believe. So we did San Diego, LA, and Santa Clara. Actually, this is Santa Clara. And so we did, I did, San Diego in January and then LA in February. And we just got done with Santa Clara. So this booth is paid for mostly by the City of Redding, the Convention Bureau. They then said, Shasta Cascade Wonderland, you're our partner. You can have your stuff in the booth. Shasta Cascade went out to its eight counties, said, who would like to man the booth, help us? Nobody raised their hand except for Trinity County. So therefore, you can see we have a banner in the back, a Trinity County banner, which was angled that people would see as they walk by. And then there's a small little one at the table, which was pretty cool. And then we have our Trinity rec guides from the journal and the stands. So it was an interesting experience. The other person at the booth was a City of Redding person. We talked to a lot of people, a lot of hours on your feet. But it was interesting for the different areas and what they liked. So next, I'm sure. Oops. I think, did we, oh yeah. So this is a little out, not out of date, but we don't have the Santa Clara on there. So at the San Diego show, the City of Redding hosted the green screen booth. And I'll talk about that, where people can stand in front of a green screen and have a photo like at the bottom and have that done. And you can see that we have our marketing up there. There's the Visit Trinity logo. We'll talk about the logo later. But you can see that San Diego, there was 15,000 people. LA, they didn't give me the number on that, but it was way more. And San Diego, Los Angeles. And then in Santa Clara, we had, I think they said it was 18,000 people at that one. The reason there were so much at San Diego is at the same show, they were doing interviews for the TV show Survivor. So everyone who showed up who wanted to be on Survivor got to come to the travel show. So we've got a lot, a lot of people coming through. Of this, we had, there were drawings at our booth. And the people, when they do the drawing, they had to sign their email address. And we've collected a thousand, over a thousand email addresses that we can send a newsletter to them four times a year. So we're going to start developing that newsletter for the different seasons that we have and just update people so they don't forget about Trinity. So this is the booth, a little close up at Santa Clara. This is the drawing. The draw, they needed, Shasta Cascade wanted to have a drawing for an overnight. They were promoting the new United Flight, airline flight from LAX to Redding and also to remind people in the Bay Area that we have the flight also. When they asked all eight counties who had lodging owners who would be willing to donate, Trinity County was the only one that stood up. And Indian Creek Lodge gave for all three shows. And Straw House gave for the San Diego show. So we were prominent. We explained to everybody where these lodgings were. Both of these people are members. We handed out all their brochures, so hopefully that will help. So that was kind of fun. And then for the people that looked like they were truly interested in Trinity County, not just trying to win something, there were people who'd come with their return address labels and that's how they were entering all the drawings. We gave out these RFID tag protecting sleeves for your credit card. So when you travel, nobody can steal your information. So we were trying to think of something that people would use and the name Trinity will always be in front of them. Not a pen, but something kind of useful. So we came up with these. And the money that was used to attend all three shows was transferred from a very expensive ad we used to do in the San Francisco Chronicle into these three shows. Interesting enough about San Diego, the big challenge there was people going, where's Redding? It's like, okay, we got to get past that point too. So what we ended up doing is saying, you know where Bakersfield is? And they go, yeah. And he said, that's a long valley, right? Flip that upside down and Bakersfield's for Redding. And they go, oh, that's a long drive. San Diego people, though, were willing to drive. And they weren't too thrilled about going up I-5. And after a few hits and misses of explaining, if we told them to drive up the foothills and go through all the gold mining towns to make it to Lassen National Park and then Bernie Falls and then Redding and then out through Trinity and the Redwoods, they liked that idea. So it was a learning experience too. Next. So this is some other pictures of the people signing up for the drawing. TJ, that was done at San Diego. Those are the people from Visit Hawaii came over and were signing up to come to Trinity County. This is the green screen booth. So you can see that it was marketed with Visit Redding and the Shasta Cascade up there. And then here's two gentlemen. So what you do is you'd stand in front of the green screen, once you picked a picture. And then they had a whole bunch of props. So they had their cowboy hats on. Next slide. And here's some other people with all their props up on the green screen. And there, in the bottom picture, you see the big monitor. So the lady just had her picture, well, she's just going to get her picture taken. And then as they walk out, they can see their picture on the monitor. So it morphs them together. Next. So this is a couple. So this is up at Lake Anna in the Trinities. We were invited to do this at the last minute. The only really good pictures we had were out on lake pictures where someone can stand there, pretend like they're there. So that was kind of fun. Next. There's the lady, she just did hers, her picture. Then we have a mom and her two kids. Next. Here's some other pictures of people up on our lakes. Notice we have the Visit Trinity branding up at the top. Next. So these get emailed to them and it's all up on a website that people can go to. More people, that actual, the guy with the camera was actually one of the media people and he just brought his own crops. Next. So it was kind of fun. So we have that collection of all those that we can use and if we want to use them too. Next. So the other project we have, and this was finished up at the very beginning of 2018. This was another project with Shasta Cascade, is they asked every county for 50 points of interest. And Marie and I came up with the 50, submitted the information. So this is the interactive map you get when you go to the Shasta Cascade Wonderland. Next. When you click on Trinity County, it will show you all the points of interest that we have. And there's actually 50 because a ton of them are right there in Weaverville. And then, next, when you click on one of those red buttons, it pops up with this little information window talking about that point of interest. And then for directions, it actually has the latlons. So it will show up in Google Earth or Maps. Next. The other thing that Shasta Cascade with their relationship in the Outbound San Francisco program, which is, San Francisco gets a lot of visitors in. They can't handle them hotel-wise for a long period of time. They need people to come in, drop money, leave the camp, leave the San Francisco so they can get the next group of people in. So they have a program called Outbound San Francisco to try to get their tourists to leave San Francisco, which is an interesting philosophy. So they work really closely with the San Francisco Chronicle. The San Francisco Chronicle does this magazine, and I think it's given to subscribers and you have to buy it for like $10, I think. This year, you open it up, Trinity Alps is page 13. So it starts with a picture of the Sundial Bridge, which is a big draw. And then it moves into the City of Redding and then the Trinity Alps, which was very nice. So that helps us not being buried at the back of that magazine. Next. And this didn't cost us anything. The other magazine that's out there is Shasta Cascade with another partner, does a magazine once a year called Camp California. And they have the magazine and they have the website. What's interesting is the website, it's all Shasta Cascade, Trinity Region. It's not Siskiyou Region. It's not Plumas Region. It's Shasta Cascades and Trinity, which I thought was really nice. So I think this just comes from being at the meetings, talking to people, drumming into them how important it is that they help Trinity. And this is what we got from it. Interesting point on here, I just took these little clips about the ages, their demographics for their magazine. So our key is people 41 to 50 and then the shoulders of that. And the incomes is $75,000 to $100,000. So those are the people that they target this magazine to. So that's another plus. Next. And inside that, this is kind of hard to see, but those two squiggly lines, look like the green lines are actually highlights. So they had, the lodging owners had to pay to be in this. And the only two from Trinity County who paid were Tree Lakes KAWA and Lakeview Terrace Resort, the new owners down there. But at least gets people an idea and hopefully they'll come to our website. Next. Further in the magazine, they actually have a whole article about the Shasta Cascade. And we found out at the trade shows, people really are looking for something different. We heard a lot about, we need to explore California more. And they needed, they seemed intrigued by a more rural, undiscovered experience. So that's why they're pushing this last frontier branding. Next. So for the Chamber, since it still holds most of the TOT money, but as we moved to the Visitors Bureau, the top project that we hear from all our members is they want a recreation map. Some map that shows the county, where you can go, when you come to Weaverville or Hayford or South County and all the stuff that's around there. These are just some examples. We're going to have to figure out how to fund that. Maps aren't the cheapest thing in the world to produce. We do have the GIS systems with RCD that can help us. What doesn't cost money, but just takes volunteer time, is to go on Google Maps and put every single one of our lodging businesses, every one of our business members on Google Maps. And in addition, you put points of interest. This I found when, on a trip up to Trinidad, we're driving along. I wanted to have lunch, opened it up at Trinidad, zoomed in. And lo and behold, they have a pinpoint for historical landmarks. You click on that, it takes you to their webpage and a paragraph about that historic landmark. And I thought, we already have the 50, they're already identified. I have latlons. We just need to get them in Google Maps. So that's, doesn't kind of cost us anything. This is one of those time sync projects. In addition to that, a couple of the other things that we're looking at doing is getting our website a little bit better, really work more on our partnerships at all three shows. Humboldt and Menasino were there. They are really interested in working with us. I had to explain, we don't have a lot of money. And they're like, yeah, 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 but they have to get through you to get to us. So we want to work with you. And then itineraries. Almost everybody said, what can I do in two days? What can I do in three days? What can I do in a week? So we need to work those out so people can download them. And then the other one we got asked a lot was RV parks. I have an RV, where can I go? I think that's a challenge in Weaverville. We need to figure out where can big RVs park besides an actual logging truck on 299 and stop and see some of our stuff. I've had two RV people, and Darryl mentioned this too. They're coming from Redding, they drive through Weaverville and they go, what a cute little town. They head outside of town, there is no place to turn around. They can't come back. So we need to think of what we can do that when they drive through the town and go, oh, wouldn't that be nice to stop there? At least we can turn them around. And we need to have a way to show them where RV parking is. So those are the main things we're going to work on. I think if we can get those two things done in the next year, probably get the rec map going, we'll be doing good. I don't want to bite off more than we can chew, but we're going to keep working on the partnerships. And one of the fun things that I saw was, I just got the Eddie Bauer catalog. Every photo in this catalog is of young people hiking. And they actually even have a photo contest. And they said, post your photo of you hiking and tag it YI Hike. I thought, super, we can do that. We have a lot of photos of the Trinity Alps and people hiking. We will go out there, post them on Instagram and also tag them with YI Hike. And we'll just kind of coattail on somebody else's campaign. So that's kind of our strategy. The Chamber and Visitors Bureau gives a total of $20,000 in TOT. So that's about as much as we have to play with. And then hopefully, we're going to be able to put all of that money on the Visitors Bureau side, do marketing with that 20, and have the Chamber self-supported just on its membership. So that's going to be our goal going forward. So, any questions? Any questions? I have a couple that I want you guys to do first.
Yep, just a while. And thank you.
You're welcome. It's fun, I have a good team.
So Kelly, I have a couple of questions. You know, having the partnership with Shasta Cascade, seems like it's leveraged quite a bit. I don't know if you said it earlier, does, how much does that cost?
For us to be a member?
Yeah.
Right now, the Chamber's only paying $250 a year? And if we were to, if we can get to the point where we can get up to their $2,000 level, then we get in more presence in the magazines, they do. But right now, it's more of a being a board member influence and a squeaky wheel.
So they've been able to leverage that relationship, maybe in a good way?
They're nice people.
Yeah.
And my hat's off to City of Redding. I can go to their T-Bid meetings, talk to the hoteliers and just say, you know, this is what's going on in Trinity when your guests have, want to do something different similarly.
And you kind of touched upon my next question where, you know, we do, we're lodged right between Shasta, Redding, and then Humboldt, Menasino. And how can we leverage that side of us to, are they talking with a partner over there to help bridge the gap?
No, Redding, Redding, Redding really thinks that they can keep people in Redding. Well, they have all the things in Redding. And it's 45 minutes out to Volcano National Park. They can get to Bernie Falls. They can do the caverns. And oh, by the way, at the trade show, the number one thing that even got people to even think of driving all the way from Northern California were the caverns. No matter what else we brought up, it wasn't until we showed them a picture of the caverns did it pique their interest to even drive to Redding. So I think we have to acknowledge there's things that will get people up here and then figure out how we leverage that. So Redding doesn't do that much with the surrounding counties, except for saying to Shasta Cascade, here we are, how we can help, I think.
And do they have a similar organization on the coast of Shasta Cascade?
Uh, yes, they have a North Coast. It's not as active as Shasta Cascade, but what Humboldt has is an amazing, another T-Bid. So the one in Redding, I think, is a couple million. Their budget for billboard is $80,000. If you go down to Sacramento Airport right now, you'll notice that they're running a video at the baggage claim. There's a big video screen that runs. That's a $20,000 a year program that they're doing. So that's a hundred thousand right there. And then they have all their other programs. Humboldt has three million. They're building a bridge through the Redwoods. The people can walk one of those suspended bridges. That's what their business organization is doing. So, you know, people are going from Volcano National Park to the Redwoods. And they have to go through us. Our goal is, how do we get them to stop? The good thing about Buckhorn is people don't get carsick anymore. The bad thing is they're not exhausted by the time they get to Weaverville. The bad thing is they're not exhausted by the time they get to Weaverville and need to stop. So they just keep right on driving, and then by the time they get to Straw House, they're tired, and that's where they want to stop. So how do we get these people, who's like, "Ooh, we're a slalom course, all the way up the mountain," to stop in Weaverville? And I think that's going to be our biggest challenge, is how to do that on the way.
And then another last question, this goes to any marketing approach that you guys are involved in. How are you tracking the turnover to actual visits?
So we were working with Shasta Cascade about that, and even they say it's hard. You can look at the number of increases. I think what we're going to have to do is poll our lodging members and ask them if they have seen any increase. I'd like them to ask everybody, "How'd you hear about us?" But I think that's the best we're going to do, and then hit it on our website.
And besides, what we might see in the increase in TOT dollars that come through?
Yes, I mean, yeah. You know, and to get, so the TOT really has to, I mean, our marketing really has to be far away, and I think the other group area that we haven't hit is Southern Oregon. The nice thing about Southern Oregon is they're on a different school schedule, so their schools don't start till after Labor Day. So in Oregon, so we have that whole group of people that we can market to, to kind fill in that August that's been shrinking on us just because of California school starts. Any other questions? Questions from the public?
Yeah, I have a question. Jean Lam, Weaverville Chamber of Commerce. There were several of us that visited the Shasta Cascade Tourism Summit that we just held in April, and it was a really fabulous event. And we were looking at the upstate California, their new magazine and everything, we were looking at the Trinity County page, and so can you tell me again how all that information is compiled? I mean, the articles that are done, pictures they choose, who all decides all that information that goes in there besides the paid ads? I mean, do you have a Trinity County group that kind of looks at, hey, this is what we want to be represented, or of course, strictly Shasta Cascade? Who does the calendar events and all that?
The Shasta Cascade does most of it. If we kind of send them notes sometime in October, the big issue is that they will not advertise anybody in that magazine unless they're a member.
Right.
So, but over the years, we've updated the articles and added to it. They do have a tone and stuff that they like, and we've asked for edits and we didn't get them, just because it just didn't fit the way that they liked the article done. But we can put it in, but that comes in about September is when we need to get that in.
So all the ads have to be approved by a certain time? I mean, what's your timeframe on getting in the magazine? It's produced once a year, so is, I mean, if there's new businesses going to join, what's kind of the timeframe for getting in that magazine? When's their deadlines?
It's about September.
For any of it?
For any of it, yeah. And they only have two staff people, so a lot of times we'll get the warning like, "Oh, by the way, here's your ad that you ran last year, you have a week and a half."
Because I noticed in the calendar events, a lot of the contact information was incorrect on who you contacted for that event, so, numbers and stuff, so.
Yeah, they never ran past that, and we just probably missed it before. Yeah, they don't, they don't take every page and send us like, approve this, unless.
So you don't get to look at the, being on the board, you don't get to look at the Trinity County page and kind of put your eyes on it?
We can, I mean, if you remember to do that, it's just, you know.
It was a great summit, the Tourism Summit, it was fabulous.
Oh, good. So ready for an exciting presentation?
Yes, I have one more question on this. Veronica with the Weaverville Desert City Parks and Recreation, and then over here, Veronica 's mom for Weaverville Wave Swim Team. Recreation map, when we, on the swim team side of things, or even recreationally, when there's tournaments and the things that come in, everything there, people are asking for, I know it's not as far away as San Francisco, but there are a lot of visitors from paradise, even that want to know where the swimming holes are. That's their big ask. How, do you have the information to create the recreation map somewhere, and it's just the cost of producing one, or is it that you're trying to put that together? Because I think that would be a great asset.
So we have the map, so RCD has that layer in the GIS system. What we would have to do is either find someone to do the work, GIS work for us, which some people can do at that level, to create, so you have a map, and then you create a level and has all the GIS points, and then we identify them, and then we print the map from that. So we still have some work to do to get those 50 points that we already have in there, your things, and other things we think people might want to do. So it'll take a while, and then the printing.
So you're still gathering the information to put together into a map format, either either hard copy for a flyer, or on Google Maps?
Yeah, well, we haven't even got to the point of putting it together. Yeah. I mean, what I think we'll do is when we get to that point, then we're just going to call for all ideas, and just see what we need to get there. Because if we can, what I did find was, nobody was going to drive up here for two hours of something. I mean, they wanted to figure out how to fill their entire weekend. And these are people who live in the Bay Area, so they want to like, "I want to go here from here, here to here in an hour and a half, and then in a half an hour here, and then go to lunch, and then do this, and do this," and they want like four things in the afternoon, so these are like hyper people. We just need to have more things laid out for them, a lot of things to do, we just don't tell people about them very well. So we need to lay those things out a little bit better. So hopefully, we're going to be getting to that map thing summertime, hopefully. Okay, great.
Okay, so you have another question.
Susan's going to talk about a very exciting project.
Okay, I have a slide deck too. So I'm Susan Marie of Weaverville, and I am a member of the Trinity County Chamber. And I also volunteered to take on the task of facilitating the display at the State Capitol, that project, facilitating, shepherding it to a conclusion. So, you can go ahead and flick it. We are a group of volunteers, and we decided that it would be easy to make our purpose about creating a lifetime impression, because one of the members of the committee, as an eighth grader, and she's a grown woman now, visited the State Capitol and fell in love with Shasta County's diorama display. And as a result of that impact, she's on their committee saying, "We've got to have something really special." And actually, she became a real source of inspiration for me walking in on this thing to say, "Wow, we've got to make something really great for Trinity County." So our goal, of course, is to do several things. We'd like to inspire the people that do come and check out the diorama, inspire them to wonder about our county and be curious, and perhaps want to come up and see it for themselves. We're also hoping to cultivate the desire to know more about the county. And of course, the display itself is created by the volunteers, and I'll be talking about them here in just a minute. So it's our love of Trinity that's kind of coming together to even create the diorama in the first place. We've got artists, we've got craftspeople, designers, marketers, and so on, working on this project. If you haven't been to the Capitol, the box, some call it diorama, diorama, not sure which one. The box is pretty big, it's kind of oddly shaped. It's close to six feet tall, about five feet wide. It's a little wider at the bottom and goes up a little narrower at the top. But the great news is that Trinity County's location is in a high-traffic, high-visibility area. Now, the bad news on that is the longer that we don't have something really compelling and amazing in that location, I feel like, gosh, we don't want to risk losing it, right? So again, part of what's fueling our desire to have a great-looking diorama is knowing that it's in a high-traffic and high-visibility location. There is overhead lighting, and in the design that we picked, and you'll see the design next, we're also going to put, there's a plug down there in the bottom, we're also putting some really nice lighting in, and that will backlight our river and backlight our signage. So we're going to do that to make it have a little more dramatic effect. Now, Maria Cargill is an artist here in Trinity County, and she works with charcoals. Her work is extraordinary, and it just made sense, when you look at the artwork that we're suggesting, it really made sense to have her do an original painting. So that's what's happening, is she's doing an original, and then that original will be blown up to fit in the diorama space. What we are doing is, we are using a material that's going to enable us to actually kind of wrap it, so that we create more dimension to our display. We have several other people that have contributed. Hopko blew a fish for us, that's pretty spectacular, I think most of you've probably seen his fish. There's a river that we're actually creating, we've built four rivers so far, we're getting really close. The Hopko fish will nest on this river. And there's a gal out of Hayfork that works with polymers and such, and so she's helped to pour this river. That's Che Crafts, so she's a part of the project. And then Laura Sigmiller is that eighth grader that saw that display all those years ago. She's actually working on the graphic arts part of the project. We have a budget that the Chamber has given us around $500, but so far, most everything's being donated. And in terms of a completion date, we're hoping end of June. But I have to be honest with you, what slowed our process down is that we took the time to have original art created, and unfortunately, Maria had an issue that delayed her completing her work for three months. So we're back on track now. So go ahead, let's look at what we've got as the vision for this. I hope you can see enough of it. So essentially, the five foot, six foot, five-ish feet wide is a scene of the Alps. So you can kind of see it over there in the corner. And then a river comes out, and it's in this river area that we've now taken the liberty to create, oh, about a foot of space, and that's where, actually, we're building a riverbed, and then filling that in with a polymer, the fish will nest on there. And then the front will actually be a banner featuring pictures from around Trinity County, and some verbiage inviting and compelling the viewer to experience and come and be a part of Trinity. So that is pretty much how it's going to look. We're in the process right now of having Maria complete her art, then that will be blown up and put on the special, it's like a plastic. We're working on choosing the photos and writing the copy, so that's where we are with that. And I guess before, maybe we'll go switch back to the picture, but really, we're happy that you asked us where we are on this, because it's important. It's important to get it done. So, does anybody have any questions? John?
When's the grand opening?
Well, we're hoping for the end of June.
And will our representatives be there from the State Capitol?
I have not yet made arrangements as to who, so you're recommending that we have a giant grand opening?
Well, at least for the locals. I walk past this every time I visit the Capitol, that's the entrance I use, on the lot I see the board. And I do want to remember, thanks to Price for recent auto, they went down there and did this originally, that's why it was so weird. It wasn't that bad. This is really fantastic, this needs to be done, and thank you.
Oh, gosh, you're welcome. It needs to be.
Go to the grand, I'll go to the grand.
We have to let the board know ahead of time.
Yes, we will give you updates.
Surprise, Grace, you hit something.
I just wondered what happened to my 40-year-old bottle of wine. You know, kind of around the home.
I'm sure, I'm sure Otto took it with her.
So I, so a couple, so is this the second version from a couple of years ago? Or, because it's been under construction, is that banner still up? It says, "Under construction."
Yes, yes.
It is.
I saw it, yes, last week.
Oh, you did, okay. Because I go a different way, so I sometimes put my head down there. So this is going to be the newest, latest change since the 40-year-old. Is that, do I have that right?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, I thought there was another minor version to this new version.
And since we're not hiring professionals to do this, I mean, yes, we've got a professional artist and professional local talent, but we're not hiring a company to complete this. So it's out of, you know, pure love that people are contributing this element and that element. So that also accounts for the fact that it's taking maybe a little longer.
So I have a request from Supervisor Ralph, who couldn't be here today. He wanted me to pass along his thoughts, he's not able to see this, but if there was an opportunity to host an electronic component, so images could be changed periodically in a time, you could keep the skeleton of the diorama there, but some other option. So you could maybe change those photos in a, not monthly, but you know, every year, someone could go down there with a thumb drive, quickly change something out. So he wanted me to pass along those thoughts to you guys.
We have, we have not explored doing anything electronic in that manner.
Okay, so I'm the messenger.
Thank you, I will take that back to our committee and talk about that. We also don't want to create a situation where something fails, technology fails, that it's just sort of sitting there, kind of floundering, like a big nothing, for a while. Because I don't know how often we'll be able to get to it to actually maintain it. So part of it was like, how could this be low maintenance? And for the backlighting, I have already purchased three of these globe lights, so that I have two backups waiting in the wings, just in case the lighting fails. So, okay.
My only comment, I mean, way through, of course, is there, does it make sense to add in one of those photos an actual image of the map, so people actually can see in comparison to the state where Trinity is? Or are you afraid that might scare them away? Because it's a long drive.
No, 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 we need that. And so what we were planning to do is use the glass and create a detail?
Okay, perfect.
And put that, apply that on the glass.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. But that's an essential, is placing Trinity kind of in perspective, so.
For members, anything else on this? Members of the public?
Thank you.
Nope. All right, looks great.
Thank you so much. I will say, you make a very good point, Susan, that is volunteer help. It is Volunteer Month. This county can't survive without the volunteers throughout the county, so this is another example, as the Chamber, Weaverville Chamber Arts Council, fire departments, the folks that put on the gala, those goes on, so thank you. And we'll take a break while you guys. You being back to 4.4, under human resources, approved the revised job description and modify the District Attorney's Department's allocation list to read as follows to Victim Witness Advocate 1 and 2, effective April 16, 2019. Approximately cost of salary benefits for Victim Witness Advocate 1 at A Step is $5,095, and for Victim Witness Advocate 2 at A Step is $5,500. Good morning, Charlotte.
Good morning, Charlotte Nelson, HR Director. So this item, the board supervisor's actually approved a CALOES victim witness assistance program grant to the District Attorney's Office, this was back in October 2019. In order to prepare victim witness centers to participate in a coordinated community response to mass victimization and terrorism, this grant is going to provide a additional $100,000 to the county, and it's on a recurring ongoing basis to support a full-time program for the patient for a mass victim advocate condition. The centers are tasked to develop an assistant plan to support enhanced immediate response and recovery efforts, and establish readiness in response to mass victimization in the essence. I want to really emphasize that mass instance definition is starting at four people per day. So we often think it's some shooting, but it could equate as a fire that is arson started in that community, and Weaverville has many victims out as well. The department is requesting, so to request modifying the actual job descriptions of the victim witness series, there's three. victim witness series, there's three classifications in the victim witness series, there's two advocates, a one, two, and a four. We wanted to include the grant requirements along these. We are a small rural county, we're difficult, we were evaluating that to create one mass victim advocate position in addition to the current positions we have. And the grant does allow someone who is focusing on the mass victim duties to also carry a modified victim witness case of their friend that has a career history. We have reviewed this with the union, and they're in support of modifying the three job descriptions. We're asking you to change them as well, and add allocations to the department.
Okay.
So, I just want to be clear, I think I understand. So, we add these, in the discussion, it talks about an addition of $100,000 is available. That's two plus?
$100,000 to...
Total.
For one, to fund one person, one additional person.
In previous positions, aren't you?
Not by that grant.
Thank you.
So, we're adding, follow-up to his question, we are adding a third victim witness to this lineup. And majority of the time, of course, is under the mass victim assistance.
Correct. Right, there's, I listed quite a few things, but they have quite the objectives that they would need to develop and continue maintaining, as well as working with other agencies with this focus.
All right.
So, this position answers to the district attorney?
Correct.
It seems to me that there would have to be a working, a strong working relationship, though, yes.
Being the additional, I would be designated to this to communicate with the department and direct the advice of the agencies. Is there that?
It just seemed to me that they would have to coordinate together extremely well, otherwise, we'd have two different divisions, and since we don't have equal, we have two different superiors over that, that seemed to me odd to me. I understand that's how it's set up, maybe I'm asking the wrong person a question. OES answers to Richard.
Ready?
So...
Question ready?
Yes, I'd love to question, lady.
And I didn't mean it that way.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Well, the problem, what I saw in this is that you have one position under review, and then you have this position under the DA. It seems to me that you could have a situation where people are working on the same basic issues, doesn't matter if it's a forest fire or a forest fire started by arson, so you could have, have to have the same overlapping accomplishments that you're trying to gain, but you have two different department heads, and so...
Right.
I could see one side saying, well, I think this is important, the other side saying this is important.
I think it comes down to how the grant is written and who it's arranged with, because the ones through the OES department is specifically for emergency services, and this other one is for the district attorney's office. It's been a little confusing for me initially to just understand that, but it is the way the grant is written, and yes, it is coming from the Cal OES department, but it is basically within their jurisdiction of services, which is not related to emergency services. It's more victim witness. So, that's all, really, I have for you.
All right, I just get back to arson forest fire versus a non-arson forest fire.
Right. But again, you know, being a...
Maybe I'm just not understanding.
Yeah, it's more of a victim witness grant perspective versus the emergency services side of it, so...
Right, thank you. Did you hear?
Really, I just, if I can clarify, or pick one, Susan. My impression of it is, OES deals with the potential and during the disaster, this is on the individual basis, after disaster, dealing with the individuals, not during, necessarily, during a time of a fire, of those who are victims of it, that makes sense. Does that help?
Yeah.
There is somebody from the DA's office, and I assume that the victim would have to come to the DA's office or file...
I assume they are.
File something.
Come on up. I would also, the grant position is going to require that the event stems from a crime. So, if there's just a forest fire that started by, you know, lightning, that's not going to fall under that person's workload, but if it's arson, or if somebody, it just, it has to start with a crime. So, and they would be expected to work closely with OES.
I guess, yeah, that's my point, is that these people, we need to have them work together.
And we do, we do work together.
Thank you for that. Okay. Any questions from the public? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board on this item. Board members, anything else? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to pass to accept this as presented.
Thank you, Supervisor Rapp. Do I have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second, is this a motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved, thank you. All right, so moving on to 4.5. Modify the allocation list for the sheriff's office to read as follows. Twenty deputy sheriff one slash two, or deputy sheriff three, maximum seven, or sheriff sergeant, maximum 3.5, effective April 16, 2019. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for sheriff deputy one at A step is $5,027, for deputy sheriff two at A step is $5,455, and for deputy sheriff three at A step is $5,928. Okay.
So, February 9, 2018, then-year budget review, the board meeting, the candidates and ad hoc committees requested a budget committee to fund a third code enforcement officer at the sheriff's department. This was approved, however, an extra allocation was inadvertently not added at that time. The department moved one sheriff deputy position from their patrol division over to enforcement division, and that created a vacancy in the patrol department, and has remained ever since. This allocation request would allow that department to recruit and fill that vacancy in the patrol division, and may reflect the flexibility of it, either recruiting for a one, two, or a three.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Get it?
Members of the public? Nope, seen none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve, ask for presented, and apologize if this board messed up, but of course it did.
I, I'm glad we have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so moved, thank you. All right. Item 4.6, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60, wow, that really good, huh?
Yeah, so very. Is Shelley so soft spoken?
2.60.4110A, authorize hiring an eligibility specialist three at range G180, step E in Health and Human Services Department, effective April 16, 2019. Approximate cost and salary benefits for an eligibility specialist three at A step is $5,180, and at E step is 62, I'm sorry, $6,128. Okay.
So, Health and Human Services has been running a very long recruitment for an eligibility specialist three classification, actually started back in November of 18, and the three is, you know, a highly experienced lead worker level. The applicant that they finally interviewed and has presented as the best candidate for this position has actually 10 years of experience as an eligibility specialist. They are currently working in chassis cavity as a three, and have received applicable state federal system training in their role, and this also includes specialized training in foster care and adoption eligibility case work. This level of training and experience would be a tremendous asset to the department, and of course, serving our community, as they are requesting authorization to offer this position above A step at E. All right.
Board members, questions?
No questions.
Okay, public, no? All right, we'll go through these quickly.
Okay, motion to approve, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
We're on 4.7, I O.
4.6.
4.6, moving ahead, oh, eight, not lengthed, okay, 4.6, motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, thank you, whoever. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so moved. 4.7. Take the following action in Health and Human Service Department, Human Service Division, effective March 31, 2019. Pursuant to Trinity County Code, Section 2.60.360, reclassify employee ID number 02428 from eligibility worker two, G164, step A, to an eligibility specialist two at a range G170, step A. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for an eligibility worker two at A step is $4,532, and for an eligibility specialist two at A step is $4,763. All right.
So, if you recall, my board agenda at the last board meeting on April 3, this is related to, it was incredibly long.
Right.
We did have a new hire that was missed from that agenda, so I am bringing them, you know, on additionally to request that you would approve reclassifying them from the eligibility worker to, to an eligibility specialist two. And I can elaborate on the history of it if you'd like to.
Board members?
Nope.
No questions? No? All right. Anyone from the public? I'm seeing no hands, okay. I would entertain a motion.
You got it, motion to approve now, 4.7 as presented, and thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, so moved. Thank you, Shelley. 4.8. Waive the reading of and enact an ordinance adding Trinity County Code, Section Chapter 15.24, to Trinity County Code pertaining to mass grading regulations introduced on April 2, 2019, no fiscal impact, fees offset in other permitting programs. Good morning, David.
Good morning, David Coleman, GOT and by Michael Myers. This is the second reading of this ordinance for adoption. SAV recommends it with some minor changes that were approved by the board to go to the planning commission at the next available meeting, and striking one paragraph that is contained in the SAV order, and happy to answer your questions.
Do you want to just review those quick changes for the public, either who's here today or on camera?
That's right. The paragraph to be struck is in Section 5, related to the idea of future ordinances to be worked on. This is a specific request, can you move that language? The planning commission, in the next meeting, we're looking to review the language about agricultural exemptions, to clarify what that means related to specifically disking or dricking, or what type of agricultural practice that refers to. Also, to discuss with the planning commission the idea of reducing the time limit for the county to respond to permit applications from 30 days to 21 days, that was a specific request, and also to revise the emergency definition, to clarify what qualifies as emergency work, and how this permit applies to that condition.
Great, thank you so much. Questions from the board?
That's all.
Excellent.
All right.
Members of the public?
I should add, the way the idea of free, aggressive, and verging should also be discussed with the planning commission as well. It was an issue that had come up with discussions with a number of agencies, we've been helping Cal Fire to clarify that issue, is an existing exemption, and I believe H, that will also be discussed with the planning commission.
Okay, do we know when that's going before then?
The next available meeting in May.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay.
Hey, Grace, Melissa, and since people aren't here this time about the grading ordinance, because they probably feel like, why bother? Going to the planning commission is nice to give your input, but they need to remember that this is where it's finalized, and I was thinking that just for fun, we could have some kind of contest where people could come up with items that aren't regulated by the government, because I can't think of any. So, I was thinking we could have a contest to see if anyone could come up with anything, and we could do ordinances on that, too.
Okay. And for a reminder to the public, once those items that went through the planning commission, those two will come back to the board, so there will be another opportunity for the public to weigh in. Okay, anything else you'd like to add? David, or we're a bit there.
All right, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, you're getting a motion to approve 4.8.
I can't believe it.
I'll second.
All right, first time now, this is history. So, say, thank you. Supervisor Rapp?
Aye.
Supervisor Tyler?
Yep.
Supervisor Charlie?
Aye.
Supervisor Ward? Thank you, thank you, David. Okay, moving on to 5.1. Government's Code, Section 549, 54.5C, conference?
I'm sorry. You're going to have to move through this, Supervisor.
Okay, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation?
Would you like to defer the three, not send your house chair?
Have counsel read you out?
Counsel, we just have.
Moving to closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 54.5C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, one, Trinity Action Association, Inc. versus County of Trinity, and all Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 19, CD 001.
Thank you. Now, anyone would like to speak to that item? Okay, see, then, we will go into closed session. Thank you, counsel.
Move it away from you. It's not you.
Three and an alternate.
Yeah. Direction was given to close session, item 5.3? 5.1. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
That's right, chairman's the one that's not on.
Correct.
So, one thing y'all, we'll let them on.